Meeting to order tonight. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Let the role reflect, we do have a quorum with the absence of Councilmember Lund and Councilmember Brooks. Tonight, we have several historic preservation awards to be presented, and Community Development Director John Hinsman will introduce them. Welcome, John.
Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council members. I'm just here to play a very support role to the fine work that our commissioners do here. I'm pinch hitting for Justin Fortney, our city planner tonight, who is our staff liaison to the Heritage Preservation Commission. And we have Cindy Toppin here tonight on the commission here to present some awards to some fine outstanding folks who've created great environments within Hastings. We all know that Hastings is history proud, and there are certain individuals that take their extra steps to make sure that the history of this city is preserved for future generations. So I will turn this over to Cindy, and we will go from there.
Great, thanks, John. Welcome, Cindy.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. I represent the Heritage Preservation Commission. I am the current Chair of the HPC, and I'm particularly excited about this because I get really jazzed about old houses. And I'm here to show you some wonderful pictures. You're going to be excited about this tonight. So we have three preservation award winners tonight, and we didn't do this in 2020. So this is the first time we've done since 2019. And so not only will these people be getting a plaque to honor their house, but they're also going to be getting a century award, a Century House Award, because their houses are all over 100 years old. And if my Vanna White will just hold up one of those Century Plaque so that you can see what they look like. And our goal is to have dozens of these in Hastings. Lake City has it, and it really stands out. So let's begin with our first house. This house is on 623 Tyler Street. It's the De Zell House. It's the location of the Old City Jail. The Old City Jail was moved to this lot about 1882, and it was converted... We don't know what happened, but it's still there. The current owner worked with the HPC to completely and meticulously restore the building. You can see what the inside looked like, and you can see what it looks like today. They replaced the siding with LP Smartside manufactured wood siding. They saved or replicated the trim. They replaced the windows with the same profile as the existing windows. It's been completely redone, which is certainly allowed. And then, oops, I want to show you this. If you can see the little holes in here, that's where the cell bars actually were when it was a jail. So they retained that. Isn't that cool? So this is a fine example of historic preservation, and the current owner is Marcy Sadler. And I don't believe Marcy's here tonight. We had thought some of the owners were going to come to be recognized tonight, but you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. So we will go on to the next one. This next house is 705 West Third. And this, you can see, is what it looked like before. This is known as the Albert Truex House, and it was built in 1872. The house was moved from Second Street. The original land was bought from General Le Duke in 1868 by Anthony Reed, who sold it to Albert Truex in 1872. This two-story house has a hip roof with dentil molding at the cornice. They're projecting bays at east and west elevations, and that's original to the house. There was a cupola, which was taken off. And although all... siding, they exposed and painted the original wood siding, which highlighted the original trim, which you can see near the roof. This is a great example of restoring original features instead of replacing them. Lisa and Landon Duban own this house. Yeah, your ward, Jen. And I don't believe they're here. This house is one of my neighbors. It's 327th Street West. It was foreclosed for a very long time. This historic home was built in 1885. It belonged to Theodore Cook. He was a trained pharmacist who moved to Hastings in 1906. Now, listen to this. His only profession in Hastings was banking. I just said he was trained in pharmacy. Did you get that? So he was the president of the Hastings National Bank from 1938 to 47. The two-story woodhouse has a French porch supported by wooden posts and is framed with wooden... owner worked with the HPC to complete... About this, the neighbors came and begged us to please support this project, which... are three preservation award winners. And I think you'll admit it's just amazing, the before and after. I think it really helps you to see, you know, what can be done. So the next award that we have is our stewardship award. And the intent of this award is to recognize a homeowner who's maintained a historic house, which previously got a preservation award. So this house received a preservation award in 2003. And the owners of this house are Paul and Terry Krantz, who I'm sure many of you know. So it's 307 Sibley. And as you leave tonight, you can drive by it because it's right across from the police station. It was built in 1868. It's got two and a half stories. It rests on a limestone foundation and has a clapboard exterior. It has a large addition at the rear, which has identical trim. The house is a great example of Italianate style and is among the best conserved examples of 1860s residences in Hastings. The original owner was Archibald Hayes. He was a legislator and a senator, and he was the postmaster from 1865 to 68. The Hastings Telephone Company was located in this building. Paul Krantz, Sr., bought the house, and at various times, family members have had a beauty shop, a piano studio, an insurance office out of the house. It currently has four apartments. The owners continue to meticulously maintain this fine house. They recently built a shed in the backyard, which is in itself a little gem. Staff used this apartment as a good example of historic apartment reuse during a recent ordinance amendment. Maybe some of you remember that. And our last recognition tonight is for 1120 Tyler Street. A few years ago, the commission started also recognizing a mid-century modern house. This house was built in 1957 by local lumberman Ben Sontag. I bet some people remember Ben Sontag. He ran the Hastings Lumber Mart for 33 years, beginning in 1949. It's an L-shaped, four-bedroom brick rambler home. The oversized living room and family room have a vaulted cedar ceiling. It's important to note that because the original owner and builder was the owner of the lumberyard, he spared no expense to be on the leading edge of fashion. So the doors are thicker than normal with scrolls. There are hidden pocket doors, lazy susans that are built in, and triple-pane windows. The current owners are David and Sheila Hubley. So I hope if you run into any of these owners, that you will thank them for what they're doing. I think heritage preservation does bring people to town to see our historic homes, as well as our historic downtown. I'm sorry, no one was here tonight so that you could have your picture taken with them, but we will get all these wonderful plaques to them, and I thank you for your support. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Cindy. Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Cindy. Great storyteller, and I have a question for you. We could put a plaque on these... How do we use your voice as an example to tell that story? If somebody's coming to Hastings and wants to see what it was, see what it is today, how would you recommend... Or does your commission talk about telling the story? Can it be done?
Thank you for the question. Yes, education is part of our task. We had a big plan prior to the pandemic that we were just about to implement, and obviously, things changed. But we have gathered some information from other towns, including St. Cloud, that's done a particularly fine job of doing newsletters, of doing stories on Facebook, social media, that kind of thing. And I think that's still part of our plan. But part of what you're talking about would be like a walking tour kind of thing. And the council funds the chamber to do that. And they have been working on developing a walking tour for the last couple of years. Again, there was a glitch in terms of the pandemic, but that is in the works and is something that we hope happens in the next couple of years.
Follow-up question, Your Honor, is some of this... I know going from Tyler Street to where you live might be a little bit of a long walk. Do we see something that could be on our website that is a video? So I could take young kids on there, and they could pull up their phone and listen to your voice tell the story. Is that something that you guys are... Or is that the future?
It's something that the chamber is working on in terms of making, you know, QRC codes. And, you know, I mean, I think that's part of it. Do you want to have, like, Lake City and Red Rock have a pamphlet? So if you go into the chamber, you can grab one of those pamphlets, and you can go walking around on your own with the map. But the way of the future is to have something on your mobile phone so that you can have your smartphone as you're driving down the street, you know. And so I think the chamber was trying to go in that direction. You know, I'm a proponent of both, I guess, because I'm old school, and I'd rather look at the map and the pictures and walk around that way. So yes, we're talking about that, and we are talking to the chamber about what we'd like to see done. And I should also give a shout out to the Hastings Historical Society because they're also trying to do things in this manner. And they have regular meetings, and they have a great Facebook page, if you haven't seen it, where they're promoting before and after and old-school pictures all the time on a regular basis.
Are they the ones that's collecting the data about the homes, how they were used? Do they own, like...
Actually, the HPC got a grant to do a survey probably back in the 80s. And so when I did the research for the awards tonight, I went to the Pioneer Room and went through the files, and that's where those surveys are that have been done.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Any other questions, council? Yeah, it's always exciting to drive around and see these old rehabbed homes, so... Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any corrections to the minutes from the meeting of November 1st? Seeing none, they are approved. Counselor, for public... We will now have comments from the audience. For public comments, we have options for comments to be emailed prior to the meeting, as well as interactive feature during the meeting. For the emailed comments, they have been forwarded to the City Council, and their receipt is acknowledged. Please recognize that items not on the agenda will not be discussed this evening. For live comments, they have been either through our Zoom link in person. We ask that the attendees either raise their hand in person on the raised-hand feature in Zoom, and they will be invited to speak one at a time. I also would like to remind everyone that the public comments period is not intended for an extended dialogue. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the council at this time? Sure, you may come up. Please state your name and address.
Clarence Chapman, 614 East Third Street. My house is actually what was on that map that was on the wall back there at one time. I'm 58 years old, and with the exception of 18 years, I've lived in East Hastings in the same neighborhood for most of my entire life. My property is 530 feet from the walking path, and I'll be able to see these four-story buildings from every window in my house, on that side of my house, and from my yard. It's disappointing to me to see that the city of Hastings is destroying the historic district in that area. And includes the downtown Hastings with all the new high-residency housing. I'm thinking four stories, really. With the newest construction downtown, there has been... was very little attempt to make it merge into the optics of downtown Hastings architecture. It's a modern-looking building in a 19th-century historic area. And these are a couple of quotes right from the preservation page. "At the heart of the city, the nearly 50 handsome historic buildings along East Hastings... along East Second Street, Hastings' main street, are being adapted to meet the needs of the 21st-century retailers and other tenants." And another line from there is from the original Hastings design standards. And bullet point number one: preserve and enhance traditional neighborhood design, focusing on the landscape or streetscape rather than the original materials. I don't see that building that you guys allowed to be built down there as looking anything like historic. I mean, I would have thought, you know, it's right in line with the historic buildings of downtown. And yet, that... And now, with this new proposal for these residential buildings, currently, there's only one way to get the... Well, I'm not going to go into that. In the email I previously sent most of you, I'm sorry, I didn't have all of your emails, and to John, I stated there's, you know, some empty lots around Hastings, and there are acres and acres of lots. And I mentioned several of them. One at Fourth Street, West of Pleasant, and a few others. But since that time, I noticed many, many more areas that would be plenty of room for all these high-residential or high-occupancy... Is that the correct way to say it, John?
Sure.
High-occupancy residential buildings, instead of cramming them into a small space downtown. A few of them that I noted is the farm fields right in the middle of town, right by the hospital, south of the YMCA. I mean, why don't we acquire that? And there's a high-residential... I can't say it. There's apartment buildings right there. They're all in that same neighborhood. Why don't we put them there? Instead of cramming them into a four-acre lot down here, why don't we just keep the character of the neighborhood? Sell those lots as private lots, single-family homes. That's what... People would buy those in a heartbeat. There's also... To my point is, there's acres and acres of land in Hastings and other parts of town that could easily support these types of projects. I think personally, and this is my opinion, that I think it's absolutely ridiculous that the city of Hastings is jamming these high-residential buildings, four stories tall, in some of the smallest parts of town. Sell these areas to single-family housing and make... That is the makeup of that neighborhood, not high-rise buildings. And move these big projects to the areas of town that are already on this look. I do not agree with the zoning change, and I encourage the council to reject and deny the plan to change the zoning in this area. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Clarence, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Anyone on Zoom? And no one at Zoom? Okay. Council items to be considered. As you know, we had a closed session for later on this evening. We will be moving that closed session tonight to a future meeting, considering that we have a couple council members that are absent. Counsel, I would accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Fults.
Your Honor, I'm going to abstain from voting on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Because I have a conflict of interest possibly on one, and so I'm just not going to do it.
Okay. Okay. All those... I still need a... Councilmember Vaughn. Second, okay? Any discussion, council? All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed of the consent agenda, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails with Councilmember Fults abstaining. Tonight, we have a warding of contracts and public hearings, and we have a comprehensive plan amendment 2021-45 for the mixed-use high-residential. And we have with us Community Development Director John Hinsman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'll put some information on the screen for the item we're considering tonight, which is not the Historic Preservation Awards. Hold on a second. There we go. All right. For us tonight is a public hearing and resolution included for your consideration to amend the comprehensive plan to create a mixed-use high-residential district. There's two actions. One is the creation of this district. The second is the designation of properties within it. The map that I have before you shows our existing comprehensive plan, which is shown here. It's got a little bit garish to look at, but you've got Highway 61, Mississippi River. This is downtown, Second Street, Third Street, et cetera. The area in purple here is what's termed mixed use. And that is a mixture between residential and commercial, the traditional downtown area of the city. What we're asking for tonight is the creation of a new district, which would be termed mixed-use high-residential. The mixed-use high-residential district would be located over here, which would be between Second Street and Fourth Street, between Tyler and Bailey Street, the CP Railroad being over here. This is including the Block 16 downtown parking lot, as well as this project here, south of Third Street, between Third and Fourth, which is the Stensel Development Project that Hedra has been working on. So that would be the designation. Then when we take a look at the mixed-use high-residential district, it would be the same as the current mixed-use district. The difference would be is the amount of dwelling units per acre would increase up to 85 units. And so that could occur in the future on these properties. When we take a look at why we would be taking a look at a change for this, when we have smaller properties within the downtown area, the density figure has a much greater effect on that. Smaller the property, in a similar building, it's going to have a higher density. When you take a look at, like, art space, for example, that has about 37 units in it, but it's on a larger property, so the density is much smaller because they have the parking area, et cetera. When you have a situation like the Stensel Building that we're looking at, that takes up most of the property itself, which leads to a higher density. Now, it's going to be a four-story building, which is not terribly unusual for this area of the downtown or for downtowns of this nature, but it does have an adverse effect on that density. So we're looking at the creation of that district to incorporate that. When we take a look at the Block 16 property, the Red Rock Corridor commuter parking lot, we own that property. We have a long-term lease for use as a parking lot. I don't see any short-term changes in that one, but thought that would be good to include that in case something might come up in the future on that property. So that is the action that we have before you tonight. We did have the Planning Commission review this at the November 8th meeting. They did recommend approval on a 7-0 vote. We didn't have anyone speak during the public hearing at that time. So tonight, council, we ask you to hold a public hearing related to the comprehensive plan amendment, and then I have a resolution in your packet for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, John. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak at this time in the audience, you may. Is there anyone on Zoom? No one on Zoom with a raised-hand feature? And no one in the audience? At this time, I will close the public hearing, and we will have council discussion. Councilmember Vaughn.
John, can you educate us again? You just said we own that parking lot. It was... Can we do what we want to with it, then? Or do we have a commitment with Red Rock to say, we gave you a parking lot, and they asked to stay a parking lot? So we hear that.
Councilmember... The funding for the parking lot actually came through Red Rock and their partners. So they paid for the construction of that parking lot. In turn, we signed a long-term lease for that parking lot to reserve it for public use. That's for 30 years.
So for us to really even incorporate it in there, there's not a whole lot we can do with it for another 20 years?
Correct, correct. You know, there may be things that we would look at in the future where we would... Might look at that property for redevelopment and have parking capacity elsewhere on that. That's been a very preliminary thought on it, but potential. It's a full block and in good position to the rest of downtown.
Your Honor, a follow-up to Mr. Chapman's question. The property that Stensel Group was coming to the city with, that property's for sale at all times. If somebody wanted to buy it and make it a residential, it could have happened by now. Somebody could have asked for that. I think what we're finding out is density is how they're getting to their number to justify the cost. They need a lot. They want to be around activity. They want to be by the transit. But they also need that many numbers to justify their construction. A single-family lot may not pay for itself there.
True, yeah. You've got tire land values in that area. You have a situation, too, within the downtown where you don't have a lot of surface parking. So the effect on density is going to be much stronger when you don't have on-site parking because you don't spread that, those numbers of units on a larger piece of property.
Yeah, I just want to clarify for what Clarence had brought up. The land that he had mentioned before throughout the community, we don't own it. That's privately...
Private property.
...land, a farm field, and so forth, that a developer has to go to that and buy the land. A developer's coming to us to buy Hedra land to put in a proposed property, so... Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. Councilmember Leifelt.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, a kind of a follow-up to Councilmember Vaughn's question, but a step further, for layman's terms, for myself, that the height of that apartment building, four stories, what is that in feet? I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot. I don't know if you came with these kinds of numbers in your head. Scary if you did, but...
Okay.
What would that be as compared to, say, across the street from it is Mississippi Terrace?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. With Mississippi Terrace, it's a two-story, I think, two- or three-story building. It has a very large hip roof on it.
Right.
So when you look at the peak of the roof, it's not going to be a lot of difference between that. I did take a look at that end of it. But, you know, there's not as many units in that one, and it's a lot more roof than building on that site.
Okay. Yeah, that answers my question. And then regarding the lumberyard, the lumber building, UBC, the lumber building, how tall are those buildings?
Say that again?
Any idea how tall those buildings were that are sitting down there?
The which buildings that were down there?
The UBC, the lumberyard?
Oh, the UBC buildings. I would guess... I'm really guessing at this, maybe 25 feet, maybe?
Oh, okay. I was thinking that.
Maybe on that one. That'd be a guess from my standpoint.
Okay. Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifelt. Any other questions, council? Councilmember Fults.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, I was wondering, to the east, then, of the lot that we're selling to the developer, obviously, there's the railroad. But just on the other side of that, what are those parcels of land there? I don't believe that there's actual homes. Are there due east?
Yeah, I think... Clarence, this might be your house right here, actually. Kind of right on the corner of...
No, that's...
That's Bess?
Bess's.
That's Bess's house? Okay, yeah. So there is some houses, you can see Lake Isabel, the corner of it, right here. So there is the church property, which... This is Third Street here, the church. And I think there's a parking lot across from it. And then residential property is down here across from the CP Railroad.
And I'm sorry, could you please point which parcel actually belongs to Mr. Chapman?
I am just off the map to the east...
Kind of where this is, Clarence?
Far... Yeah, I'm on Third, so...
You're on Third, okay, up here then.
But I own the property in front of Bess's house.
Okay.
I own the property in front of Bess's house.
Almost disappeared. There it goes.
But I'm not on that map.
Okay, thank you. And then, just in follow-up, then, John. So the two houses or the two or three parcels that are just due to the west of the new development where they're going to be put in, those are large historic homes, are they not? Like, were they very tall homes?
Yeah, these are historic homes down here. I think some are owner-occupied. I think some may be rental down here, between Third and Fourth Street, towards Tyler.
I thought, yeah, perhaps, that they were rentals. I wasn't sure if they were single-family homes or if they were...
Yeah, the rental on that, there may be multiple... Yeah, the rental on that, there may be multiple units within at least one or two of them.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. And just one follow-up question. So for sure, the new development that's going in there, it's going to be four stories? I guess I somehow missed that along the way. Because remember, the parcel that's being, or I'm sorry, the new development that is going in right behind the depot, the Second Street Depot, where we sold the parking lot and we're making it one parcel. Now, you restricted the height on that building. I remember he wanted to do something like, I'm making it up, it was like 35 units, and you restricted it down to 30, and you wouldn't allow, and so it made it a, so that it wasn't so many stories, if I remember correctly. I remember there was some limitation on the size that you had placed.
Yeah, on that property, this is for the Luke Seaworth property, which is in the vicinity down there. That, I think that's 36 units is what we approved. It is a three-story building over a first-floor parking on that one. So the, the height limit on, height on that, I think, was just over 40 feet altogether.
Okay, so it was just the number of units that you reduced? It wasn't the actual height of the...
No, yeah, I don't think we had a lot of discussion on height. I think a lot of it dealt with the number of units and parking ratio on that one. And we did some further research on that and came to, came to a conclusion as to what would be acceptable and everything that we approved on that.
Okay. And so I can't think of any four-story buildings in Hastings. And so, so this new unit that they're wanting to put in the new development, they are saying that they want it, they want to make it four full stories of...
It would be.
Of housing with not like one being, like the base floor being parking?
Correct, yeah. The, the proposal as it sits, and I'll preface this by saying, we haven't, we, we've seen concepts of the proposal at this point. We anticipate the application to come in later on this week. So there'll be another stage of this where we're going to take a look at the, the architecture and the site plan in more detail. That, that we haven't done at this point.
I didn't think so. That's why I was wondering, what did I miss? Sometimes I miss those emails.
But on that one, yeah, it would be four stories of residential apartments over a, over parking. And that parking would be, would be somewhat exposed from the, the ground floor. So you'd have, it would be somewhat raised above the ground.
Okay, so for right now, we're just dealing, obviously, with the, the planning, the zoning, and then we'll, at the next council meeting, then we'll see more of the specifics of the site.
Yeah, better upcoming, probably a December meeting is when it would come to council, December or January. But what we're doing now is we, we understand the parameters of what the applicant is seeking to, to do with this property. And we're looking at our codes and our comprehensive plan and how it fits in. If, so to take a look at potential amendments to that. If the amendments are ultimately adopted by council, the project would come forward in that fashion. And then we take a look at that project in more detail.
Okay, thank you, John.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Councilmember Fults. Additional discussion, council? At this time, then, I would accept a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of, City of Hastings, amending the City of Hastings 2040 Act Plan. Councilmember Fox? And Councilmember Leifelt, additional discussion, council? Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think Compton Fults just brought up a good point. When that, when that development comes in front of us, that's where the architectural standards come in.
Right.
That some of the neighbors are talking about. And I think it's our job to make sure, and I think you did it with the Luke Seaworth, just can't put up siding in an historic area. I think there's going to be some standards, and it's up to us to make sure those standards are held to where they need to be. So I think that's a very good point. I come when Fults brought up to say, we haven't seen it yet. We're just in the concept plan of the layout there.
Right. Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. And there is a motion with a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed to the motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. We also tonight have a public hearing to amend the city code, the D.C. zoning district. And John, you may continue.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Similar, similar area, this dealing with the zoning code itself. Our request tonight is to hold a public hearing to consider an amendment to the city code related to what's termed the Downtown Core Zoning District. The Downtown Core Zoning District is this area in purple on the map. It includes the Confluence, the art space property here, Block 2. This is the parking lot for the Red Rock Corridor, and this is the Luke Seaworth Project that was recently rezoned Downtown Core earlier this year. What we're asking for is to amend the terminology of that district relating to bulk standards and in particular, height. What we're asking for consideration is to draw a line, like I've shown here on Third Street, in which properties in the future that are zoned Downtown Core that are south of this line, which would include the proposed Stensel Building here, would have a different height limit and a little taller height limit than the properties to the north. Now, the properties to the north that are zoned Downtown Core are limited by a 47-foot height limit, which is tied to the Finch Building. The Finch Building on Second Street is the tallest building downtown. When we went through our Downtown Master Plan 20 years ago, we, we wanted to, wanted to set a rule that no buildings would be taller than the Finch Building within the downtown. And in particular, when we take a look at the mass of buildings along Second Street and along the riverfront, in my mind, those were the ones that were the most important because they have a direct correlation on how the buildings relate to one another. When you take a look at properties that are a little bit off the beaten track on here, where this is a block or two off of downtown, that 47-foot limit has less of a correlation to the Finch Building, similar to the building we're standing in right now, where we have a cupola limit, a cupola here that's, that's much taller than the Finch Building, but it's not out of character with the rest of downtown. So the amendment we're asking for specifically is to establish a height limit south of Third Street within the Downtown Core District. This only applies to properties that would be zoned Downtown Core of 57 feet, which would be 10 feet taller, essentially another story taller than what is allowed within the areas north of Third Street. We did have the Planning Commission review this at their October 25 meeting. They voted 7-0 to adopt the proposed amendment with limited discussion. So that is what we have before you tonight for consideration. This is a public hearing. You may open it at this time, or I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in, in the audience that would like to speak during the public hearing at this time? Anyone on Zoom? No one on Zoom. Again, anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the public hearing at this time? Councilmember, or, sorry, Mr. Chapman?
No, I don't want to go that road. I just want to reiterate that the height of that building, let me put, put a pic, a picture for you. Every night, I wash my dishes. What, what do I get to see for the last 20 years that I've lived? Well, I live here, I've owned a home for 20 years. My parents owned it before me. I've been able to look out my kitchen window and see the beautiful top of this building. You put 60 feet, it's, it's four, four stories plus parking. That's five stories high. 12 feet, figure 12 feet each, you're going to be up 60-some feet, which is darn near as high as this building. I'm not going to be able to see the dome no more. That's all I got to say about that.
Thank you, Clarence. Anyone else like to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed? Oh, we have a Zoom. Okay?
Oh, maybe I need to, is anything coming across there? I just want to make sure I got the volume up.
Um, hello?
Yes, welcome. State your name, please, and address.
Uh, Nate Stensel, 5700 Josh White Drives, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. We are the, the potential developer of the site, and I just wanted to mention that we're very excited about the opportunity for the potential development in Hastings. We feel there's great need for this type of housing. We, the building itself will be about no more than 45 feet high, and it is four stories due to the size of the site and the density needing, needed to really justify a project of this nature. We are proposing a very high-end building that will be pretty much 100% hard surface and be a very modern, not modern in a sense of modern style, but it'll be a very classy building with a lot of brick, some very nice metal touches. But it'll be pretty much 100% hard surface, a very high-quality building, very similar to one that we just built in Northfield in the downtown zone that was received extremely well. We feel, like I said, there's a great need for this, and the location of it, I, I think that it's, I guess I feel strongly it's the type of development that I, I would think most cities would enjoy seeing in their downtown zone.
Thank you, Mr. Stensel. Council, any, any questions, council? Any other discussion? Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. So just for clarification purposes, so that building, the new building will only be four stories high, and there won't be a first floor that will be designated for parking? It'll be, it'll be like lot parking, like ground parking?
Am I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Stensel.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know who was supposed to answer that. No, it does have underground parking in it, so the main level will have it. But one of the characteristics of the site is, is we're blessed to have a, a pretty much little site covered with, with bedrock, so it does affect our ability to go into the ground as much as we would, as we would prefer to. So about half of what the parking floor would be typically would all be underground, but in this case, about half of it will be underground. So that'll all be underground parking, climate control, and then there will be an additional about 35 to 40 service parking stalls also that are on the east side of the property along the railroad tracks.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. You know, I, I personally, I think that with the, the art space building being where it is on the other side of the, the depot lot, that's what it's called, and then with the new Seaworth Building that's going to be, you know, coming in, I, I think that it honestly makes sense that these buildings all be of, you know, similar height. And then eventually, once the wastewater treatment facility has been vacated in 2028 and that parcel is made available, that's another potential lot that could be, you know, developed into higher density. And, you know, and I think it, it makes sense. I know that young people, millennials, want to be in areas that are more like our downtown, where there's lots of options for food and coffee and entertainment. And, you know, it's just a little bit different kind of lifestyle in Hastings that the downtown could be offering for more vibrancy. And so I, I understand completely Mr. Chapman's, you know, concerns about the historic district, but I think as long as these new buildings all have the same look and feel and they're blending into the rest of the, the downtown area, which they have been thus far. I think the art space building looks very nice where it is. I think that there, there is a, you know, a cohesiveness to the area, and, and we have had a lot of cha, you know, challenges with some of those, those homes that are down there, you know, in the Fourth, Fifth, Sixth Street area being, some of them are very large, and they're being broken up into, so they're no longer single-family homes. They're more being restructured within them, you know, to have more tenants within them and such. And, and we've been changing some of the ordinances to, you know, allow it up for some of that higher volume within those homes, just so that, again, so that they're financially viable, so that, you know, the owners who have them can actually have enough income to make them, you know, somewhat profitable, and that they're putting the money back into the homes to maintain them so that they don't fall into disrepair because those houses are very old and they do need a considerable amount of upkeep, many of them. So, you know, so personally, I greatly appreciate, you know, the concerns about, you know, maintaining the historic nature of our downtown. But yet, you know, I, I still feel that, you know, we have to, you know, continue to look forward as to how is it that we continue to see our, our downtown become more vibrant and, you know, attractive for new residents, you know, to come, you know, into the area, or, you know, existing, you know, folks who, who would like to have that different flavor of town, being able to, you know, park and be walkable and, and enjoy the, the downtown as it is. And so, so I, I am in favor of, you know, the, the new development going in. I think that it's a positive, an aspect, you know, that we can be looking forward to within our community. And so I'm going to be, I'm voting in favor of this. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Fults. Additional discussion, council? In council, I'd look for a motion to adopt an ordinance of the City of Hastings, City Code Section 155.31, zoning code downtown, Downtown Core Zoning District. Councilmember Fults, the second. Councilmember Fox, additional discussion, council? All those in favor of this motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed to the motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thank you very much, John.
Yep.
Under Community Development, we've already addressed the comprehensive plan and the second reading. Tonight, we also have a resolution for the variance of the 2021-38, a side yard setback, Matthew Hyman, 502 Sixth Street East. John?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, City Council Members. Tonight, as the mayor pointed out, we, the council is acting as what we term the Board of Adjustments and Appeals and taking a look at a variance from our city code. A variance is an exception to the rules. And so what's being requested here is at 502 East Sixth Street, which is located in the yellow, there is a requirement under our zoning code that, that detached garages need to be at least 10 feet from the, the side yard when they're abutting a street. And Mr. Hyman is requesting a variance to that rule to allow it to be five feet from the property line. So that is what is being requested tonight. From a tactical standpoint, when we look at granting of a variance under our city code, it requires six of seven council members to take action to approve a variance. Tonight, as you're aware, we have five members present, so we are not able to, the council is not able to consider granting the variance if they desire to do so. However, if the council looks at the variance and acts to deny the variance request, a simple majority is necessary. So to deny the variance request, you would be able to make that motion tonight. In taking a look at what has been the recommendation by staff and the recommendation of the Planning Commission, both bodies have recommended to deny the variance as requested. When we take a look at granting a variance, there's a number of specific rules and things that need to be present in order for us to consider a variance. And one of the kind of most important items on it is really taking a look at the, the qualities of the property and the ability for them to meet the ordinance requirement without a lot of difficulties. We sometimes term practical difficulties. In this circumstance in reviewing the property, we, we feel, and the Planning Commission occurred, that relocation of that garage or moving of the new garage to meet the setback, another five feet, would not impact tremendously the ability to use that garage on the property. Specifically, here's what we're looking at. A little closer view of 502. This is the present view of the property. You can see there's a, this garage here, which I think now is attached. It looks detached now. And then the new garage, which will be going down here. You've got Bailey Street over in this direction, Railroad Spur here. Little closer look, here's the setbacks that are applicable. 10-yard setback on the side here, the garage would be going down here as proposed by the applicant. Little closer view here, where it would be, garage coming down, driveway, kind of an older shot of the, of the garage from the street. And then this is a view of what the garage would look like. Bear in mind, there's an attached garage over here, detached garage would go here. The applicant is contending that in order to, to get into this door over here, it's, it's a more difficult driving movement to, to get around here. So he is asking for it to be located a little bit further, closer to the property line, which would be closer than the... than the ten-foot setback that's required. Again, when we're taking a look at our requirements for granting variances, there needs to be something truly unique and difficult about the situation that we would consider in granting the variance. And in this circumstance, both, both staff and the planning commission have concurred that we don't think that practical difficulty is present. So before you is a, is a resolution for denial of the variance. So again, if the council chooses to act on the denial resolution, they may do so tonight. If the council is inclined to consider approval of the variance, they would not be able to do so tonight, and in doing so, we would have to bring that back at a later meeting. So not sure if Attorney Land has anything further to add to that one, but I can stand for any questions. I don't believe the applicant is here tonight.
Thank you, John. Counsel, any discussion? Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, does the railroad have any say in a setback? Am I putting it that close to the railroad?
They have minimum requirements, council member. As far as how close they can be, it would meet their requirements. I think it's about, I think it was twelve or fourteen feet from the center of the, the rail itself.
Do we have to send it to them to get their, to take up their phone?
Nope. Yeah, I mean, we, they, they were, they were given notice as a adjoining property owner, but, you know, it's sometimes it's difficult to, to notify a large entity and get to the right person, so we haven't had any real conversations with them on this, no.
Wes, can you just confirm? The pictures I see on top are the same at the bottom, but they have trees in them?
Yeah, it's interesting, yeah. I, they, they are the same. I believe one of these shows, you can see the, the difference between this pavement line here a little bit. This is closer, this is, this is at the five foot that is being requested by the applicant. Where down here, it's a little further away, this would be at the setback in its effect. Yeah, the, the trees is curious. I don't know why one has trees and one doesn't. Maybe they were, maybe they were taken out just to give a better view of the driveway.
So the trees are present today?
I believe so, yeah.
Councilmember Vaughn. Thank you. Additional discussion, counsel? Okay, Councilmember Fults.
Your Honor, I have to agree with Councilmember Vaughn that just getting that much closer to the railroad just seems highly dangerous. I've had a project that I was working on professionally and we were just trying to get within swing space of a railroad track and we couldn't get the, we couldn't get the railroad to approve it. And so I would, I would be just dumbfounded if they would approve a house being set literally, I mean, what is that? I mean, that's got, that has got to be like five feet from the side of the track.
I think it's ten.
It's ten? It's still, oh my goodness. Seems like it'd be very dangerous.
Safety.
Yeah, there's a, a state statute requirement, minimum setback, I believe of eight and a half feet from the center line of the tracks, which is not very far. This would be, I'm trying to think of if the applicant had put down what that setback distance would be, greater than eight and a half feet, but yeah, it's, it's close to that railroad. Granted, it's, it's the spur railroad, it's not the mainline railroad, but it's still a railroad.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, you know, kind of looking at the prior picture of the actual, the one from above, you know, the fact is, they've got the room for this to put it where it needs to be with the proper setback. I mean, looking at that into my consideration, always wanting to work with the homeowner on the space that they have allotted to them, you know, things can be, things can be tight. Storage is a hard thing to come by and I understand that. But looking at the photos, there, there is clearly space there for it. I would have to not be in favor of the variance due to the fact that the space is there. Don't really find, based on what, John, what you've indicated and the planning commission has said as well, is that the inconvenience of turning into that spot, to me, doesn't allow for the variance. I myself have been in some situations like that, where my driveway came in this way and my garage was over here, and yes, it did turn out to be a nuisance, but I, I wouldn't be in favor of the variance based on the amount of space that they have to position the garage where needed. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. Councilmember Fults?
Oh, I'm sorry. So we're looking for a motion then to den, to either deny or approve this variance, correct?
And I would qualify that by being either a motion to deny the variance or a motion to table this, correct?
Correct. Because we need six of the seven.
If you're going, if you're inclined to approve it, you wouldn't be able to do so this evening, so it would need to be tabled to a future meeting where you had at least six council members. That's just for the approval end of it.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you for clarifying on this. And so, but this wasn't recommended by the planning commission for acceptance?
Correct, yeah. Staff recommendation and planning was to deny.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to deny this variance request then, per staff recommendations.
Okay. And that means that we'll move it to the next meeting for six of the seven vote?
No, uh, Mayor, we can, we can entertain a second and take a vote on the denial tonight.
Okay. And a second, Councilmember Leifeld, additional discussion, counsel? Okay, all those in favor of the motion state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed to the motion, state by saying nay. Okay, that denial prevails. Uh, tonight, we have a resolution to authorize placement of septic system in the MUSA for the Daniel Bauer Northwest Corner of Pleasant and County Road 46.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. A little bit unusual request, we don't deal with too much, and that is septic systems within the city. As you know, most of the city is, is served by municipal services, city and water. There are some areas that aren't. And within our city code, there is a requirement that to consider any septic system or what's termed an onsite sewer system, that it requires council approval to do so. And so we do have a request tonight from the Bowers, who own this ten-and-a-half acre property located at the northwest corner of Pleasant Drive and County Road 46, 160th Street. Uh, they're proposing is to sell this property to an individ, to a future entity that would build a, a single-family house kind of hobby farm on this. The property itself is zoned ag within our zoning district, our zoning map itself. The ag district has a ten-acre minimum requirement, which this property meets. And taking a look at our future plans for sewer extension, it's in what's called the MUSA, which is the Municipal Urban Service Area. That's just a fancy way of saying that's where sewer service goes. Within our comprehensive plan, we have areas within the MUSA that are served at present and areas in future growth that would be areas of extension. So, you know, with the annexations we consider, General Seaborn Drive, those, those we had to extend the MUSA boundary, our urban service boundary to serve it. In this situation, it's in the path of future development, at least per our plans, from a practical consideration, the, the Bowers who own property down here are not interested in the near term in extending or selling their land for development. So you've got a situation here in which you've got almost a, a half mile between the existing sewer service, which is over here by East of Village Trail, to the corner of this property here. The, the practicality of extending that service for a single-family home is, is not practical, so we are recommending approval of this. There's a couple of conditions that we do have. One is, is per the ordinance regulations. That is, when this develop, property develops at some point and services are extended closer to this property, once the services are extended to the property, the property owner at that time has one year to hook up. And that one year hooking up might be just for the hobby farm, or it may lead to further intensification of the property as well. When you do have a ten-acre property, it, it's of a, of a size in, in which you could, you could consider future urbanization of it, as opposed to smaller pieces in which that's difficult. When you take a look at the practicalities of having a, a primary, secondary drain field in the property and the size of the property, it has adequate size for that as well. So we are recommending approval of this, and I can stand for any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, the houses just to the west of that location?
Mm-hmm.
That are, there's a tiny little cul-de-sac back there, dead end and few houses right on 160th. How are they being?
They are, they are not served, actually, this area, there's my mouse again, is within Nittergier Township. There's about six homes here that aren't within the City of Hastings, they're all on, on private well and septic systems.
That answers that question. Thanks, John.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, is there any other residents in the City of Hastings that have a well, private well?
Councilmember, not many. Uh, I, I, the last one I recall was way off in East Fourth Street, near the likes property. There's a new house built there maybe five, 10 years ago, ten-acre site that we approved a well and septic for. That was the last one I remember. We've had a few over the years that, that we've, we've hooked in, but it's a pretty unusual circumstance, other than, the only other area I can really think of is Glendale Road, down by County Road 54. We don't have services down there, so we have a few large lots that are on their own systems.
The reason I ask that is that I'm questioning what the requirement of, you have one year to hook up. What if they don't want to hook up? Is it in that one year, is it the city's cost to hook up, or do they have to pay the fee to hook up? If so, could it be, if it's their cost, could we say, you have one year to do it? Otherwise, it's going to be your cost to hook up to our city sewer service?
Sure.
I don't see what the responsibility is, why we have to put that into work.
Sure, it's under our ordinance requirements right now, so it, the purpose behind that is, is we want to be able to have folks on city services when they're available. And so when the services come to the property line, we put the cost and the responsibility on the property owner to hook up at that time.
But we don't know that cost, so?
No.
Our ordinance is putting a cost on this resident, potential resident, that someday you're going to have a cost and it's going to be your cost. We don't know what it's going to be.
Correct.
Because we want them on our system, or is it required? Is it required to be our ordinance?
It's required to be our ordinance.
Is that, is that our city stuff, or is that a met council site? I'm kind of hung up on, maybe we need to look at that ordinance, why are we requiring someone? I get if the services there, most likely, they're going to want to hook up. Why wouldn't you? But I just get a little hung up on requiring this part, when we don't even know what that cost will be, potentially, ten years down the road anymore.
Sure, sure.
That's my concern. That's our ordinance, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. Any additional discussion, counsel? Then I would accept a motion to approve a resolution of the city council of the City of Hastings, allowing construction of an onsite sewer within the Metropolitan Urban Service Area. Councilmember Fults and second by Councilmember Vaughn, additional discussion? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed to the motion, state by saying nay, and that motion prevails.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. So much, you had a lot on your agenda tonight. Tonight, under administration, we have amendment of the Finals, Final Care Act report, and, Dan, you'll be speaking to that.
Thank you, Mayor. First, trust me, this is not as complicated as it might sound. Really, what we are trying to do here is maximize our eligibility for grant dollars. As you certainly recall, last year, we received about $1.4 million under the CARES Act to be used for a fairly broad list of eligible uses in response to the COVID pandemic, and actually with how broad the definitions of eligible uses are, we, we have expenses primarily in, in public safety wages that go beyond that $1.4 million, so it did not cover everything that might have been eligible. We did not apply for FEMA's Public Assistance PA Program, in part because of just the paperwork involved in it, but also largely because of the, the existence of the CARES funds and that the PA program normally has a local matching dollar requirement to it. So what we're proposing today is, subsequent to the CARES Act, which had to be done last, last year, subsequent to that, FEMA changed its local, local match requirement, so that now those dollars or that program can be used 100% towards eligible expenses, but a much, much smaller list of potential projects in the CARES Act. So what we're proposing here is council's approval to amend our reporting, our list of expenditures made under the CARES Act, take some items out of that, so we can apply for the FEMA PA program. Those items would be the transport respirator, the Kyvek disinfectant machine, various PPE, personal protective equipment, masks, goggles, Kyvek suits for, for the EMTs, possibly Plexiglas, possibly porta-potties that we added to the downtown, but in total, probably $30,000 to $37,000 of additional revenues that could come in. So that's really what we're seeking, is amending our, our, our report from before, taking out items that we did submit, so we can apply for this other grant program. And obviously, since public safety wages were higher than what was, you know, the, the total grant amount, we would backfill the CARES report with those other eligible expenses. In the end, we're trying to maximize grant dollars and anticipate this would be $30,000 to $37,000 of additional revenue. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Counsel, any questions? Okay, no questions? If not, then I would accept a motion to approve an authorization for the Finance Department to amend the city's final CARES Act report submitted to the State of Minnesota. Councilmember Leifeld? And Councilmember Vaughn? Additional discussion, counsel? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed to the motion, state by saying nay, and that motion prevails. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any announcements? Okay, I have a few. Uh, the city has upcoming commission openings for 2021 on HEDRA, Heritage Preservation and Planning Commission and the Arts Task Force. Please complete application interest forms online. City offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 25th and 26th in observance of Thanksgiving. Show us how you shine. If you are decorating your home or business with outdoor lights this holiday season, please consider sharing a picture for all to see. Photos will be shared on the city website, social media, and placed on a map for a self-guided drive-by tour. This is not a contest, just a chance to have fun. Gobblegate is Thursday, November 25th. You can register all the way up until the race day proceeds benefit Hastings Family Service. And just to add to that, is online registration only, except for the day, the night before, Wednesday and Thursday morning. And the prices go up each day, so we encourage you to register online. Small Business Saturday in the Holiday Hoopla are Saturday, November 27th. Enjoy music, crafts, smores, horse and wagon rides, tree lighting, and retail and restaurant deals. You can see all the above activities on the Downtown Business Association Facebook page. Meetings coming up are Tuesday, December, I'm sorry, November 16th, 7:00 PM, the Heritage Preservation Commission. Monday, November 22nd, 7:00 PM, Planning Commission. Wednesday, November 10th, 6:00 PM, HEDRA. And Monday, December 6th, we have a 5:30 City Council Workshop and a 7:00 PM council meeting. There are no other announcements, counsel? I would accept a mo- meeting. There are no other announcements, council? Um, I would accept a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Fults? Councilmember Fox, no discussion? All those in favor of adjourning, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.